Good evening, this is Tuesday, July 28. This is the public hearing on proposed changes to the district code of conduct in the Rhinebeck Central School District. And I'll call the hearing to order at this time. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joe, and you can explain the changes.
Thank you, Mark. So we discussed this at our July 14 meeting, when we did a first reading of changes to this policy, as well as the policy on inter-class athletic's regarding the change from selection classification to athletic placement process. But this hearing is a requirement by the regulations of the commissioner when a school district is proposing modifications to the current code of conduct. As I believe you're well aware, we're required to convene a stakeholder committee to review our code of conduct and make recommendations for possible changes. And those changes are in the code of conduct on pages six through 15, which you have in your board packet. As we discussed last time, there were several not insignificant changes that were recommended by the stakeholder group, which included parents, students from the high school, as well as teachers and administrators from each of our schools. On page six, there are changes recommended regarding the student dress code, which, again, in a nutshell, to repeat our discussions from last time, have been made more general in nature and have taken most if not all the specific gender-based clothing references out of that part of the policy, while retaining the key language from the commissioner's regulations, which addresses the fact that students attire should not create or be reasonably anticipated to create a material disruption to the learning environment. So you have that kind of slightly stripped-down version. That's not been changed at all since our last meeting. I don't know that anybody raised any concerns about that last time. If you go to page eight, there are references banning use of e-cigarettes/vaping that have been included on page eight. Page nine, item E, there was some good deal of discussion at our last meeting about that. It was a point that was raised by one of our parent members of that committee regarding the use of electronic games and other digital devices, including smartphones with Internet access. That was raised as a potential concern, at least for that parent, in terms of exposing other children to inappropriate content on games and/or downloads, cellphone downloads. So I did, based on our conversation, I did attempt to make some modifications to that to incorporate some of your feedback from our last meeting. No one contacted me after you received your packet, so I'm hoping that those changes were reasonable and acceptable. If not, we have an opportunity certainly to discuss this evening before we act on this a little later in our agenda. And if you skip ahead to page 13 and 14, inclusions of the term drug paraphernalia in the specific items that talk about possession of drugs, alcohol, other substances, our administrators requested that the term drug paraphernalia be included in that as something that is a violation of our code of conduct. And it's about it. I mean, more than, more changes than some years, but fewer than others. So I'm not sure if anybody in the public has comment to make. That's what this is for. We have already had this discussion.
I just want to thank you for, you know, taking the conversation that we had last time and rewording, you know, making some refinements to the issue of use of digital devices on school buses to be clearer, I think, and not unnecessarily capture use of digital devices that's not intended to be disruptive. So I appreciate your work on that thing.
Thank you.
Thanks. And again, just to say, since it's a public hearing, what I said last time, which was I appreciate the administrator's response to concerns raised, brought to them by some of the young women in high school around the dress code to make it a more generally neutral policy that doesn't, you know, unnecessarily target young women. So, you know, overall, I definitely support the changes made. Thanks.
Thank you. Lisa, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just want to echo what Deirdre just said regarding the change language on page nine. I would, I think that the revisions that you made following our discussion strike a nice balance between the concerns that were raised in the committee and the concerns that were discussed at our last meeting. Appreciate the work that you did to reach that balance.
Thank you. I anticipate that the, that those who worked on the committee will find this acceptable. And this was the, this was the single largest issue for the parents who were around the table during that discussion. And the section on the dress code was actually of particular concern to the administrators in the room, not so much to the parents, and as well as to the student who was represented there. So I think we were able to address two fairly significant issues that arose during the course of the school year. Hopefully, things will go smoothly in those areas this coming year.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, so then can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Samu?
Say.
Okay. All those in favor? To an end, so that motion passes, and we'll close the public hearing. And now we'll move on to our regular meeting agenda. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14 annual organizational and regular meeting?
Samu?
By Deirdre?
Say.
By Lisa? Any discussion or changes? Laura?
I have just the one change, Marianne, I sent to you, reflecting my enthusiasm for the RSF grant in relation to student outreach community. And hoping to give the benefit of the doubt on that.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of the amended minutes? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Where any members of the public would like to make comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the Dutchess County School Board Association update. We have Lori Rich, the executive director of the Dutchess County School Boards Association, and John Rudy, the president of the Dutchess County School Board Association, with us this evening.
So, hi, everybody. This is a very strange perspective. So used to being here. Sitting in one of your seats. It's been a long time, because I like to be in front of everybody.
Well, it's nice to have you here.
Well, it's great to be here, and it's lovely for me to be here in the capacity that I'm in now. I'm the new executive director of the Dutchess County School Boards Association. I came on in January, and we've had three meetings that I've been to because I started in January 3rd, where it was a wonderful blizzard. And we had one in March, and we had scheduled one in April, but that's when spring break happened. Then we were there in May. And actually, this is for, and then we had our annual dinner meeting to close out the year. So I wanted to talk to you about what it is, especially for those of you who are relatively new on the board, what the Dutchess County School Boards Association does and what it can do for each district. And I also wanted to introduce formally John, who is our president. This is your two as a president. Correct. So.
Hello, everybody.
I see how this is going. So first, I really wanted to thank you all for creating this opportunity for us to come and talk to you. You know, we're, we're the group that meets once a month at Bosse's, down in Kipsey, on their campus. And we strive to get at least one representative of all of the 13 school districts in the county. We have a board that consists of those people, plus, and actually, everyone except me comes from a school district, so they not only do what you all do, but they come and work together every, every month for vacations and blizzards. And we meet from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. usually. I'm sorry, 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., if I'm hopeful. And what we can do for you, you know, who we are, the Dutchess County School Boards Association, we're known as the D.C.SBA for short. We are, as I said, a school district membership organization, and we are designed to work with and assist all of the school districts in the county. We work on issues that are relevant, not only to each school district and board, but also being the counties, or as a group, we also talk to county people. We talk to all the new, we meet with, I meet regularly with other counties. There's other counties on the coast, but please don't ask me to spill that out. But usually, it's in, it's in Terrytown, so I have a very scenic drive once a month there. And it's one of those things where, what we do in the, John, do you recall what year we were actually brought into being? Decades and decades ago.
Maybe like '46, something like that, '47 or '46.
So we've been around for a long time, and what we provide in our meetings, and also when members of school board come to us with issues or problems or suggestions, is really a nonjudgmental organization and forum, where every school district gets to talk to us about what is, what their issues are, what they see as something that's important that we can talk about as a group. And strength in numbers, we're able to take what all of the, all of the schools do and ask for, and take it further, further than most local, local district school boards can do. So when, especially, and here's an example, I'm sure you all know that the Kipsey School District has had a really tough go, especially in the last, not in the last election, but their budget, and what that meant to them. And so we have just started talking to them about how we, as an organization, and also how we can get districts like Rhinebeck, all of the districts, to stand behind them and be a voice for advocating that they get the funding that they should be getting as a small city in New York. They just thought, pass over, so they're in law suit. And so we talk to them, you know, I talk, I talk to superintendent there, and we plan to work with them more this coming year. So on top of tackling strategies for education and facilities-related topics, and talking about sharing what our common needs are, and where we might be able to put districts together, not to, not to meld and not become what they are, but to help each other and to learn. And one of the things that we actually got spoken to about in the beginning, when I got there in January, was talking, David Shaw comes every year and tells us where things are at in negotiation around, around the county, but whether and how we can facilitate a group conversation about where everybody's at, so that, and we actually have been talking recently, John and I, about whether we are able to work in concert with each other so that we're not actually pitted against, all the districts aren't pitted against each other with one, you know, one unit in one, in one district holding out for whatever, and then another district doing that for their own, and how we affect each other when it comes to negotiation, when it comes to building and maintenance and all of those things. And we are also here to support and help all the districts who are going through a tough time, like Kipsey is right now. So that can be financial, it can be a strike, would that we have been able to have that loads many years ago, because we did have one while I was on the board. Also lawsuits and incidents that occur where public opinion might be difficult, how we can stand by you and for you to help with that. And we're a permanent organization, John said, you know, in 1946. I never was able to get that far back in favor, because we have huge stacks of everything that's ever happened. But, you know, we talk in front of various regulatory legislative bodies, not just locally, but state, and land, and national level as well. And we explain our members' legislative preferences and their concerns. And we meet with legislators once several times a year, on top of what each district does. And I know that you guys, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you no longer go to the, to the, all the meetings, and go up on, on the hill there, because you like to meet with the folks who are representing you in their local offices. And that's a question that I'd love to explore further with you. I know that you're doing well with that, and I'm wondering whether there are other questions that might be better facilitated, not just with you, but as, as a county, that can't be taken care of on a local level. And how we're organized, so we have an executive director, and we have three elected, well, three of our board members are elected to the board as leadership. So John is our board president, we have a vice president, and we just this year, actually just at the end of this year started, we have, we have a treasurer now. And that's Karen Morton, who's on time on Plains Board. And she's doing a great job so far, and I'm thrilled because I don't know if I could do it anymore. So, and we, one, one person from each district volunteers to spend that extra day, month coming out to see us. We meet on the third Thursday of every month, which first, I'm sorry, it's the Thursday, first Thursday of every month. Except in September, because September, because Labor Day starts in, you know, as in September this year, so our first meeting, and you've got a list of all of our tentative, not tentative dates, those are, those are firm, but we try very hard to bring in external experts on, on various things. So anyone who can stand to sit and talk about where the APPR actually is as of September 10th. Julie Shaw from Sean Pearson is coming to talk to us about it, and she is, we are told she's the guru of APPR from legal. So, Mark, Mark, I believe I've been, Little Birdie told me that you're the, you're the one who's going to be coming.
That's correct.
That doesn't mean that because Mark is coming, that none of you can come. We urge you to come. When you see something that you think is of interest to you, we have plenty of room and you look to have more input and presence. So, I'm talking too much, so let me know. So, the meetings that we have, like I said, the first Thursday of every month from 7:00 to 9:00, we tried very hard not to go over. And I send an agenda, not just to the folks who represent you, but I send, and you must have seen them, I send them to every single board member across the entire, the entire county. And it's interesting who comes when there's, when there's something that really keeps their interest. And what will happen on the 10th, just because Julie's the one that we know is coming on a particular date, after she talks about where the APPR is, she'll do a Q and A with all of us, so we have specific questions. You can either give them to Mark, and he'll ask, or you can come and be there and ask yourselves. And we also provide external opportunities for district members to attend other meetings, other conferences, that address specific education issues that are of interest to boards or specific board members. And we do that in a couple of ways. We have, when we do the, when we do the legislative conference up in Albany, we share a hospitality suite where not only do we eat and have booze, but we also spend a good amount of time talking with each other about what our strategy is going to be the following day, about what we're going to ask for. We have a four-county joint dinner of superintendents and boards in the fall. We do a county dinner at the convention in New York. How many of you are coming to the convention? I was definitely to see you there, and I'm there representing you as well. So, and John, you could come from, from, from?
Certainly, three of us.
Okay. So, when you look at our website, we do have one, it's dcsba.org. That contains public county district information in one place, and then five that things that the public should not, should not see. And John, you want to talk to that?
Yeah, we, we took a Google model that another association did, and we're going to be giving out, sending invitations to every single member, so you can use a Google ID, it should be simple, should be simple process, and that will let you get, people get into it privately, so we can have a way of authenticating people that we want. So that probably will be done on a later in summer, we get other ways.
And that's really what, all that I want to tell you about what we do, and I welcome you to come to any of our meetings. And this is, we don't have DCSBA business cards, but I brought mine, and I brought enough if you want to pass them around. If you ever have a question or have some, a thought about someone that might be great to come and speak, please let me know. And we also wanted to ask you guys some questions tonight, which, one of which is, you know, are you interested in having us be in to our annual county Saturday legislative breakfast? We haven't done that for a while. We have that as a, we used to have that as a meeting. Or any other opportunities that we could create to come together as a county group and discuss key issues and problems in a neutral venue? So that's question number one, if anyone wants to.
Deirdre?
What would, what traditionally happened at the Saturday legislative breakfast? And why was it discontinued?
Well, we had, we had some folks in office that were not really listening very well.
Yeah.
Those folks are not very, very sensitive.
Okay.
So that was typically a Saturday morning breakfast. And so senators, senators, I guess, and some of those people there.
So we'd like to know, you don't have to say, yes, yes, we'll do it, or, or no, we're not interested?
Well, just one thought I have about that, because I appreciate that you're here, and I think, you know, really trying to bring everyone together, not just at the meetings, but like thinking ahead of time about what's the agenda, where ideas are really important. But like the messaging, I think, for something like that is important, you know, what, what, it might depend on what people, what they want to hear about and what they want to communicate. So the content of that, I feel like that might have been an issue over the years, too, is without preparation ahead of time, it just became sort of a breakfast and opportunity for our local legislators to kind of talk some, talk about education, but, you know, making a mechanism for their big depth to that by being prepared for, in some way, I mean, just as I talk off my head, something clearer.
At the time, there was, there was a platform, so we couldn't stop the platform.
Right, right.
Of course, of course, there's some questions.
Yeah, yeah. And that's one of the reasons, actually, that we're here, starting, you get, you're the first of the 14 districts that we're going to visit, hopefully, by the end of the fall, which is, which is an aggressive schedule for us. But it's important that folks understand, boards understand, that we sort of had a fresh start, and that we're really looking to do more and be more responsive to your needs, as well as hoping that you're going to come and give us a little more hope with certain issues that we all deal with. We did that, there was once, when, I believe it was Alyssa Cassio, who was the sort of liaison, and we were working on a particular letter that was going to go out to legislators and all that. And we haven't done that much of that, as far as I know, if I'm wrong, John. But we need to do more, there's a lot more that we think we can do, and we'd like to really know what those things might be from your perspective. And so, you know, we'd love to hear, and it doesn't have to be during this board meeting, but we'd love to, love to hear what your most pressing issues are for the Rhinebeck CSD right now, and what are you dealing with, or what do you foresee as being things that you're going to face and have to deal with that are not easy in the coming year? And also, we want to know how we, like this Deirdre, Deirdre's gave a great, a great suggestion, but we want to know how we can help and support you all better than has been done in past years. So, please, I ask you to think about that, and if you want to, I don't know how you would do that, but as a group, if you could give a little time to that. It ultimately is going to help not only you, but us and the rest of the family, the best of the family. So we thank you for the opportunity, if you don't mind, I'm not going to play around.
Actually, I'd like to say a thank you for all these years that you folks have been part of the School Association. It's, although I mentioned, it's strengthening numbers and accomplishing what we have. One thing I'd say is, a suggestion, is if you folks don't have it under agenda, maybe consider putting it maybe under agenda once a month to talk about, and have a formal thing for somebody to speak about what happened there. Maybe for some, some discussion. So, thank you very much for the questions for us.
All right. Well, I'll thank both of you for being here. So I'll just ask the board members that if, you know, if you have questions that we want to bring to the Dutchess County School Board Association, I'd be happy to, you know, carry those questions to the meetings, and I will be happy to report back on what happens at the meetings. Maybe we can put that in our board committee reports and, or somewhere on the agenda, and we'll report back. All right? Yes?
I just have another comment. I just want to thank you for this schedule. That is really tremendously helpful, you know, what's coming up, and also that there's a plan to have our district regent, Judith Johnson, on a couple of occasions. It's fantastic. I mean, we, we've talked around this table about what kind of advocacy we need to be doing more in this age of policy changes happening so quickly, and... more in this age of policy changes happening so quickly and so thoroughly throughout school districts related, of course, to common core standards, APPR, et cetera. And sometimes it can be, you know, it's a challenge to figure out, more than just a budgeting issue with your local legislators, the whole variety of issues coming out of the state education department in the region. So, it's fantastic that that's something that you're organizing. I think that's really effective and important to do, and just knowing ahead of time the topics is going to be really helpful as well.
And thank you. And I promise that as we fill it up, you'll notice that there are a couple to be determined, several of them actually, and we expect to fill those, either with a very structured group discussion, or people like, you know, people like Drew Shaw, Drew Johnson, who said she'd be available in November, but I'm sure that since that conversation took place at the awards meeting for our senator and the vice president, and all of them, that her schedule has changed again. So, we have room two places, and hoping that we can put her in at least one of them. And as those changes come, I will let you know, just like I would let everybody else know, so that you'll know what your, you know, the things that are of tremendous interest are on the down, and any suggestions that you have, that you don't see, we are wide open to extra thoughts from there.
What's the best mechanism for suggesting topics? Because I actually started to think of some, and, you know, should we just email you, or...
You can email me. By now, you should have, I'll have them in green and black business cards.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That I have emailed, when Julie was on there. So, that's part of my job, and as you can gather some, then mine.
I just want to add, as someone who's just finished her second year on the board, this is extraordinarily helpful. I mean, I have colleagues who are long-serving and know the good work that you do, but it's very helpful, I think, for some of us who are newer in our service to get a sense of how we can connect with the work you're doing. So, very much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, that will move on to the 2015-16 Board Goal Development Update.
I placed this on our agenda just to keep it in front of us. We are having our Board Goals Workshop on Monday, August 25th at 9:00 a.m. That's a change we were scheduled to do at the previous Thursday, and unfortunately, my schedule presented a conflict that I couldn't change. So, we're meeting on Monday, the 25th. Several of you have already emailed all of us ideas.
Joe, 24th?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 24th.
I was getting there.
Yeah, no, no. You can imagine my head swimming with all those dates and changes, but yes, it's Monday, the 24th. It is correct on the revised agenda in front of you here. So, I would just encourage those of you who have ideas to keep them coming. I think setting them forward without necessarily the back and forth, which we'll have plenty of time to do when we meet on the 24th, is probably good use of your time. So, keep them coming at us.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm going to send an email, but I'll just like, as long as we're all meeting together, you know, two things are one to second, something Deirdre had sent out regarding addressing issues of community and volunteerism. I'm not, you know, a sort of, we heard in one of our coffees with the board, concerns around the PTSO. We all know the PTSO sent out an email, sort of an emergency email, asking for donations for fundraising, and I'm not sure what role we have to play in assisting our community organizations that help us, but just, you know, kind of like a heads up. That's one of the things that you addressed, and I think is something we might want to think about more fully. And then, secondly, the issue of advocacy, you know, what are good mechanisms for us to advocate for some of our concerns around budget and policy issues in the year ahead? So, I'll try to, you know, write something that's a little more detailed, but those are two issues that have been in my mind.
Just to keep in the back of our mind, it behooves us all to mention, whoever does the opening night speeches, it behooves us to mention the PTSO strongly on that night. I mean, there they are, they're in front of us on that night.
That's a good point.
Okay, I'll remind everyone that we did set a sort of a deadline. If you were going to send an email with suggestions for the workshop, to email them to the group. I forget off the top of my head what the deadline was, but it's approximately...
August 10?
10, I think.
I think it's the 10th, yeah. Send your emails, and I have created a electronic folder that I've been putting those emails in, so I'll try to summarize those and send them to everybody right before the meeting so that we can kind of review what everybody had to say, and that way we'll be prepared for the meeting. Okay? Move on to good news.
Yeah, a lot of stuff happening around school. You'd think it'd be quiet and sleepy, and it isn't. There's a lot of people coming in, a lot of people working, teachers, I mean, in addition to all the, you know, the prep work for the fall, there's a lot happening here this summer. So, I just want to mention that, because it's good to see people in here doing that kind of work when they could be doing other things.
How's that curriculum development work coming?
Yeah, I mean, specifically, yeah, it is. I mean, it's, yeah, it's coming. And like I said, since school got out, there have been groups in here pretty much every day since we've been on break, working on one thing or another. So, a lot of activity.
All right, other good news? All right, we'll move on to old business. Any items of old business? Okay. Public comment. Do we have another opportunity for public comment? Seeing none? Other? Okay, no items of other. All right, so we'll move on to action items. Is there anyone who would like to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa.
I have a...
Rick?
This is not an objection to anything. I just have a couple of procedural questions on the safety plan, which I'm sure you've thought about a million times already.
Or not, but, okay.
I mean, it's part of it here.
Then that should probably be removed from the consent agenda.
All right.
Okay, so, that's 6.1.3. We'll pull that out of the consent agenda. All right, and we'll discuss that as a separate item later on in the agenda. So, all in favor of the consent agenda minus item 6.1.3? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion for, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the fall coaching staff for the 2015-16 school year. Boys varsity soccer, Justin Easenthal, $4,487. JV soccer, boys, Henry Frischknecht, $2,802. Boys modified soccer, Ryan Edson, $2,285. Girls varsity soccer, Matt Grandy, $4,487. Girls JV soccer, Mark Berg, $2,802. And girls modified soccer to be determined, $2,285. Varsity volleyball to be determined, $3,576. JV volleyball to be determined, $2,542. Modified volleyball, Jody Harvey, $2,285. Cross country, boys varsity, Chris Sneed, $3,435. Girls varsity to be determined, $3,435. Modified, Jen McCracken, $2,187. Golf varsity, David Jutton, $2,788. Field hockey varsity, Mary Flyshower, $4,487. JV Anita Thompson, $2,609. Swimming, girls varsity, David Airstock, $4,487.
So moved?
By Lisa, any discussion?
The specific amounts that are related to each of these positions, are those part of the RTA contract?
Yeah, that's where they come from.
I just wanted to...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All is in favor? That's all except myself. Abstention, myself? Okay, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a final reading and approval of modifications to board policy number 5280, interscholastic athletics, and number 5300, district code of conduct.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of David Airstock to conduct athletic placement process, APP, fitness testing for the 2015-16 fall sports season as necessary.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve mentors for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve non-unit salaries for 2015-16.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Richard Zip from the position of Director of Special Education, effective August 20th, 2015.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? Deirdre?
I was just sorry to hear that Richard's leaving us. I wish him all the best. I think he's done a fantastic job. He served as the high school psychologist prior to his position.
High school, middle school psychologist.
And, you know, I think both as a board member and as a parent, he's just been incredible, compassionate professional. So, I wish him all the best.
Okay, anyone else? Rick?
What's the timeframe in terms of replacing him at this point? Do we know, or...
Rick? Yeah, we've already posted the position. I'm not sure we've gotten any responses yet. We did post it last week, and it's my intention to, I think we set the deadline sometime, second week in August, and, you know, set up a search committee like we did last time around when we hired Richard. And realistically, we'll be lucky to get somebody on board by October 1st, because any candidates who are currently working for a school district will likely need to give 30 days' notice. So, if we can get something wrapped up by late August, we may get somebody here by the beginning of September. You know, it depends. Sometimes that changes, and I would just, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I would ask you to at least to put the thought in the back of your mind that depending on the timing, I may ask you for the convening of a special board meeting to make that and perhaps other staffing appointments. That's the kind of thing where if you're, if you're working off a 30-day notice and you can pick up two weeks by having a special meeting early, that's half the time you've cut out of the process. So, we'll be tracking that very closely and maybe asking you for that accommodation.
Another question, Joe, is what the makeup of the search committee will be. Sometimes the administrators, the makeup of that committee is a little different.
Yeah, what, my recollection is the way we set it up last time, we had, we had members of the administrative team, but we also had parent members, typically parent members who had served or had some experience on the Committee for Special Education, and there are currently two parent members who you approved to be parent members at our last meeting. So, I would be inclined to reach out to them first and ask them if they had the availability and interest. Otherwise, we'll go a little deeper into the ranks of parents that we know have been interested. I've already received emails from several members of the Special Education Teaching Staff who have asked to participate. So, I don't think it'll be too difficult to put together a group of eight, 10, 12 people who are really pretty interested in the outcome of that search to meet with the candidates and provide some feedback to me and for me to the board.
Anything else? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Kathy Barpulis from the position of Mathematics Academic Intervention Services teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective August 1st, 2015.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor?
Well, I just want to, you know, say as well for Kathy that I was sorry to see that she's moving on, although, again, I wish her well. I know she's moving into an administrative position, which is good for her career, but she's been a fantastic asset to our district in so many ways. I know she's impacted so many kids' lives over the course of her career here, a super smart and enthusiastic member of our staff. So, you know, we wish her well, and are sorry to see her go.
Deirdre?
I just want to add that we all were so recently listening to a fantastic presentation by both Richard and Kathy, and I walked away from that meeting feeling so fortunate to have them both in our district. So, we really have been the beneficiaries of their expertise, professionalism, and care for our students.
All right, anyone else? Okay, all is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to abolish the part-time .6 FTE position of English Language Arts Academic Intervention Services teacher assigned to Bulkeley Middle School, effective July 28th, 2015.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised list of part-time, non-instructural personnel to be reappointed for the 2015-16 school year, effective September 1st, 2015.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant from the Reinbeck Science Foundation to fund the Bulkeley Middle School Computer Lab project in the revised amount of $80,918.34.
So moved?
By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion? Lisa?
I want to repeat what I said at our last meeting when we accepted a gift from Reinbeck Science Foundation in connection with the AP Club grant. This is obviously on a much larger scale and geared towards the middle school computer lab. And again, I think that we are very fortunate to have an organization like the Reinbeck Science Foundation in our community, and this is a wonderful gift that they have basically devoted their endeavors to last year. I want to express my personal thanks, and I know the board shares some of my appreciation.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else? Rick?
I share that. This is yet, we should say yet again, another thing that the Science Foundation and, I'm going to piggyback, and this will be a short one, folks. Remember my goal from last year about celebrate Reinbeck, and when I got a chance to talk here, I said that my direction on this was to kind of expand the umbrella that is Reinbeck Central School District to include other groups, I mean, PTSO and the Reinbeck Science Foundation. I'd very much like to find other groups that have interest in other areas of our academic area here and have them too. area here and have them to start up a foundation that can help us support the effort, the wonderful effort that we're making here. I think, and I'll end it with this, I think I saw someplace or other that the controller of the state of New York said something about the possibility of a tax cap at around 1% or less than 1%. If that happens, and you know it better than I do, if that happens, we're going to need support from other places, and this is a wonderful place. So, I just wanted to say it again.
Thank you, Rick. Okay. Anyone else? All right. All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an increase to the Reinbeck High School Bulkeley Middle School breakfast prices from $1.50 to $1.75 in accordance with Board Policy Number 8500, Food Services Management.
So moved?
By Lisa. Any discussion? All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Ashley Drace to the position of grade six science teacher assigned to the Bulkeley Middle School effective September 1, 2015 in the tenure area of science at a salary of Step IV MA+6, $64,324 in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2015-16, pending verification of recently completed coursework required for certification.
So moved?
By Lisa. And I understand that I'm going to make a motion to table this motion to be discussed in executive session. Okay. All is in favor? Is there a second for the tabling? All is in favor?
Tabling.
Tabling. That's unanimous. That motion is tabled. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President and the Superintendent of Schools to execute the 2014-15 Implementation Certification Form for the Annual Professional Performance Review for Classroom Teachers and Building Principals pursuant to Education Law Section 3012(c) and Part 30-2 of the Rules of the Board Regents.
So moved?
By Lisa. Any discussion? Deirdre.
Well, so, you know, I'm opposed to the APPR as it has existed and as it will exist. And the more I look through, and I have, and thought about sort of how it really... I just don't think that there's even like a mathematical logic to the APPR, much less sort of an pedagogical logic to it. So, this is just a certificate that says that what we did this past year, we're doing all the sort of bureaucratic business work of handing in the paperwork for this APPR for the last year. But I was thinking as I read it, I was like, well, can I vote on this like in good conscience, or can I not? And so, I'm going to vote against it just as a way to say my objection ongoing to the APPR, even though this particular item actually is not entirely objectionable, just as we're going to do what we have to do. But I just... I'm so tired of reading about what the content of the APPR is and going, it doesn't make any sense to me, and no one is really coming out to talk to us from the state to say, here's how this has intellectual, mathematical, and pedagogical meaning. So, that's just me.
Rick. I abstained on this last year, and I'm not going to be a hypocrite. I'm going to abstain on it, but not vote no this year. I think that in our committee, in the personnel committee, Lisa, you raised a very important legal question with regard to whether, when the final APPR is renegotiated, whether we... This relates to this. Whether we can legally vote against it? And since you're planning on voting against this right now, and I'm planning on abstaining, it might be a fair time to ask whether that's been clarified, and then we can move on. Do we know whether it's been clarified?
I haven't raised this specific... I mean, can you vote? Can the board, as a majority, vote no? I suppose you can. What's the consequence? Well, the governor said you won't get your state aid increase for the coming year, just like if you don't... If the board doesn't support the signing of this thing, then this past year's state... You know, they're holding the state aid thing over our head, which I find as objectionable, if not more so, than the things that other people brought up. Now, you know, we're being held hostage to the, you know, the amount of state aid that we get, which isn't a ton if we don't comply. It's all about compliance. I mean, that's the word. And you read into the word "compliance" whatever you will, but could the board say no? I mean, I suppose so, but there are consequences. And, you know, we'll be getting nasty grams from people up at the State Education Department, and whether that matters to us or not, that's really, I think, the discussion.
If I... I'm sorry, Lisa, but I just wanted to have all seven of us hear that rather than two of us or three of us hear that. Because that decision's going to come to us somewhere along the line, and this one already is this one. And we mean no disrespect to the effort that's been put in here. Absolutely. I'm sure you understand that. But that's going to come to us.
Lisa.
I have two issues, and I think I've aired at least one of them before, but I think that it's an opportune time for you to raise them again. I'll try to keep this brief. The first issue is, do we have the legal ability, consistent with our duties as board members, to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the state of New York, to oppose what the legislature has in its legislative judgment decided is the way that the schools are to be organized and operated? I think that it's going to become crucial to have an answer to that question. And Joe, while I appreciate what you just said about the state aid ramifications of voting against an ultimate APPR plan, and also potentially this action, although I don't like that we're going to pass this action tonight, I think that we need some clarity from district's legal counsel as to what our obligations are as board members. It's one thing to take a stand against, you know, as an individual, to take a stand against a legislative determination that you disagree with, but it's another thing to take a stand as a member of a legislative body, which we are, on an issue where we've basically been directed that we have to do something. Not only do there may be ramifications to the district, but also there may be personal ramifications to us. And while it may be unlikely that action will be taken by the State Education Department against an individual board member, I don't think that that's necessarily the determining factor. We have a legal obligation. We have to obey it, or we have to consider whether we're... We should be sitting this floor. I don't think we need to make a decision about that tonight. I think we need legal advice. And then the second thing is, and this is really more of a hypothetical question than anything else, but I want to pose it because, Deirdre, I understand your position. What happens if we don't have a majority of members of this board to pass this particular motion tonight? I mean, putting aside the substance of your objection, which I don't disagree with, I agree with, and I understand your position as well, Rick, but if we don't approve this ministerial action, are we prepared to, as a district, have to contend with what may flow from that? I'm not sure that if we're going to take... If we're going to have a fight, if this is the fight we want to be having, I think there are going to be more serious issues in terms of the APPR revisions coming up. But we may decide, consistent with the advice that we get, that we want to take the risk. But tonight, I think that we should get this piece of paper.
Diane.
I mean, I agree it would be good to clarify because my understanding is that we're agreeing just to follow the law. That's what we're agreeing to. To me, it's similar to something that's been involved in our training. The board members aren't allowed to vote no 10 years ago, just because of the might that we're allowed to do that this year. So, it would be good to clarify.
Absolutely. Deirdre.
I actually want to thank our two colleagues for talking to us about their thoughts about their positions on this plan. When I went through my training as well for the school board, one of the things that we were told it was our duty to do is to argue passionately and rationally, both, if we can do both, in defense of what we think our positions are as individual members of the board, presenting our ideas to the group. Of course, we vote as a group, and as individuals, we don't have power except as a member of this group. So, I do appreciate sharing the principled positions you both have on this, and I can only echo the very strong wish to know legally what are our options as a group in terms of registering our views about the APPR? And as you point out, this is going to be a much larger fight down the road. And what a great opportunity, really, to connect with you this evening. We've been talking, not only this past year, but for two years now, about what are our options in terms of protest, advocacy, and really being heard by our legislators. And this is just one example of many. So, I would welcome the opportunity to learn how individual members of school boards can connect with concerned school board members in other districts, as well as working within their own boards, to make these positions very clearly articulated for the public. So, I agree with you that the particular stakes for this action are perhaps just an opportunity for us to think about that larger problem.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. All is in favor? That's Lyons, Shulkin, Rosenthal, Fleishower, Del Bear. Opposed? Burns. And abstentions? Walker. Okay. That motion passes. Now, we're going to take up... It's going to be item 6.15, which was item 6.13 from the action item agenda, or from the consent agenda. 6.1... Yes, 6.13. Sorry. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve modifications to the elementary school building level safety plan and the middle school, high school building level safety plan.
So moved?
By Lisa. Any discussion?
Well, discussion about the specifics of this are not privileged under the Freedom of Information law. So, depending on what Rick is going to raise...
They're only procedural. You're going to be able to answer them easily, but I need to hear them. I want all of my colleagues to hear them, so I'm not going to bear anybody's soul. May I?
Sure.
How does the staff receive this information now, once we pass this?
Well, it's part of the training they get when they come back. You know, like the first day of... When the staff comes on this year, it's September 8. They get this, and, you know, they get a data download of a lot of stuff, but they receive this, and it's reviewed with them.
A hard copy. It's not on the screen or anything. I just asked...
No, I believe they give hard copy to the staff.
Partially, I'm asking because I mentioned this before, I guess, each refrained by your experience. You know, I've told people before that I was in class when 9/11 occurred. I was also in class when Columbine occurred. And had it been in Red Hook at the time, I'm not sure I would have known exactly how to handle it. And I'm certain that my colleagues, we would not have been able to handle it in a unified manner. So, we've all heard from Sandy Hook and other places that some people actually were saved by the fact that not only did they have a plan, and I congratulate you for having one and having worked for it, but that they not only had it, but they had it available and they had practiced it. So, that's my next question. Okay? I hear it, and I didn't know that, by the way. No, let me ask an interim... And therefore, the building administrators go over it in a meeting so that they're told what's... So that the staff knows what the changes are. Who's involved? Because there are staff changes.
Well, again, if you... Well, if there are staff changes that occur after this reading, then those changes will be made. But there are a number of changes that have already been made to this document, and the people who have a specific job to do in the event of this emergency or that emergency are... It's reviewed with them, so they know if there's a fire drill, this is what you have to do. This is where you have to go. These are the classrooms that you're responsible for emptying out of this hallway, that kind of thing.
And they do practice it?
Well, not the whole thing, because if you've read through this, you'll know that there are a lot of different potential emergencies that are addressed here, although many of them have similar protocols. But we do... We do at least 12 fire drills and evacuation drills, several sheltering place drills during the course of the year. So, we drill more than I recall we did 17 years ago.
Sure. And how early in the year? Let's take the lockdown or something like that. Let's take the extreme tragic case. If something terrible like that was to happen at the end of September, there would already have been a practice so that the staff could say, we know how to do this?
I'm not sure what the schedule of these drills are. I know for sure that the fire drills are intentionally spread out during the school year, but these other drills, I'd have to check with the building principals and see when they schedule them.
I just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Good question. Knew you'd be able to answer this.
Well, I'll bring up the question next time I need with them.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. All is in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We have a motion to move it to executive session for the purpose of the discussion of the employment history of particular persons.
So moved?
By Lisa. Any questions? All is in favor? That's unanimous. That we're moving into executive session.